Let's post it now. Walk through the goals. Overview their performance dashboard. What we want to do here, a few quick minutes. Pass it over to them. Steal one of those. This is really.
I believe we're just waiting for one or two others and we'll get started here in a minute or two.
If I get through four.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started here with our afternoon session. The main focus of this afternoon session is to leave today with a series of recommended changes that you as council members can agree on or would like to see of the current strategic plan and how that will help guide the next two years before you make an entirely new strategic plan. So we have a few activities for you all today that are just for each goal. And we just want to go through each goal, identify any changes you'd recommend to realign based off of where we are in 2025. And I have up here the, we have six goals. The seventh goal, and I can be corrected if I'm incorrect here, but development of a community enhancement plan. There's some changes to that goal back in '22 when the plan was instated. And so we're really focusing on making changes to those six primary goals that show on your Invisio and KPI tracker. So I believe I have that correct. Okay. When we think about the strategic goals, just like Kayla mentioned earlier, there's a few components. And we are on slide. Forty-two. Oh, forty-four right here, yeah. So this whole section for the afternoon, slide forty-four. Yes. You all currently have a KPI dashboard that's publicly facing through the Invisio platform. And it tracks the status that is recorded into each of the individual initiatives and objectives for the current strategic plan. You currently have about 50% of your plan completed, I believe, actually slightly more. And then a vast majority of it is on track and you're only halfway through the entire plan itself. So there's a lot of progress that's already been made, which is partially why this update today is not to recreate the plan, just to make changes to realign for the next few years. And what we did throughout the next few slides is just mark those that are considered completed. And anything that's not completed in that it's either on track or there's some slight disruption, we've left for changes that you all can recommend to today. But we're really trying to keep in lines of just updates to better align for the next few years. When we're thinking about changes to the goals, we really want to only focus on the goal and the objective. There are initiatives that are generated from each goal. And then there's tasks for each of those initiatives. We aren't going down that level today. Today's discussion is really just the primary goal and the primary objectives for that goal. How well are they aligned for what we as a council would like to have our strategy be in 2025? And then if you have larger changes, and we'll help guide throughout the conversation, that may be better suited for an entire plan update, we may recommend in two years, that is a much larger component of an entirely new plan rather than making a substantial pivot in a currently active strategic plan. Lastly, just want to mention to leverage what we've talked about too today. All of our conversations earlier this morning were so that you all can bring to this goals update discussion, any of those discussion items that stuck out. Any, or stuck out from the environmental scan, from the observations, from the interview conversations, and any conversations you've had at your tables, activities we did earlier in the morning. What of those that you would like to see within your plan warrant some kind of update to the current goal? So it's just a little bit of a guideline to keep in mind what the discussion for this afternoon looks like. And just like I mentioned, each goal, we just want to go one by one and make changes to better align for the next few years. Want to get started here and really just focus in on goal number one first, and we'll do all the others after. Goal number one is titled fostering good governance. There are five strategic objectives for this goal. To develop a realistic achievable goal, or goals for the plan, create shared vision with agreement by county leadership, establishing metrics for accountability in implementing the plan, reevaluate the plan and adjust as needed throughout its duration, and then collaboration with other governments. So this was the sum of goal one that was developed back in '22. So now what we all would like, what we'd like you all to do is just take a few minutes, read through these goals, and if you go to the rear of your packets, page 58 and onward, there is the full initiatives, tasks, and completion status for each goal. If you want to become more familiar with what was in that strategic objective, or so that strategic goal, excuse me. So we'll take five minutes, read through these goals, jot down possible suggestions that you may like to make to the language that you see shown here for our discussion. And council members. So just to reiterate what we're focused on right now, for goal number one, in a moment here, we'll ask council members to discuss what possible changes in the language for goal number one, shown on slide, I believe it's 45. And so whatever you need to suggest or have that discussion for the changes for the language shown on goal number one, that's the conversation we'll have here in a moment. And there's additional detail near the back of the packet. So we're happy, yeah, let us know if you need any additional kind of context there.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Did it get colored?
No.
This box is colored.
Yeah, so like the rest of them are fine, so I'm going to give you this, so then you can reference them.
Okay. Yeah, I think I have a pen in the back right now, just like hold in place. Uh, two more minutes. Okay, it's tricky. Right.
Last thing I'll add here while you're thinking, there's nothing saying you need to make changes. If you like the language, that's completely okay too. This is up to you all to decide.
We won't go down to that level. We're not going down to that level. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I'd like to draw, uh, just dive into conversation here for goal number one, fostering good governance. Council members, for objective 1.2, create a shared vision with agreement by county leadership. Any changes to, well, I'm actually curious of the goal itself, goal one, fostering good governance. You all are happy with that language and that's a goal that you want to make sure stays in the strategic plan as written as that? Okay.
So if I could be contrarian for just a second. I will go to the mat for good governance. I am for good governance. Looking at this again now, I wonder if that needs to be a goal in our strategic plan right now. And I'm happy to have that deferred to a future conversation. Where I'm coming from is when I first got on council, I felt like it needed to be a very clear strategic priority. And now I feel like good governance is something that we do, that we're focused on, we always need to do. I just don't know if it needs to be in the strategic plan. And what Administrator Brown and I were having a dialogue about is the benefit of it being here is it offers a certain amount of intentionality, which I would never want to lose. I just question if it needs to be here. And then to continue down the contrarian path, I was totally on board when we created this, but looking at it now, when I think about what good governance is, I don't know that they are these things, right? So having a strategic plan, having a vision, and adjusting to that is part of good governance. But it's actually not good governance. So I just have questions around this, not to where I feel like we need to spend 55 hours or even 55 minutes wordsmithing this goal. I just, I have a question mark here.
So I'm going to follow up on that one. That was actually one of the first things that I saw on this one. And depending on how we want to handle it, in the world of strategic planning and governance, these typically would not fall under to echo your sentiment. Um, good governance, some types of things and objectives that would follow, fall under good governance would be examples like making sure your council, your council, your leadership team, your county administrative team knows like policies, procedures, like we mentioned a little earlier, like what are the different responsibilities that fall under each of yours? So like, most of these are reflective of, yes, strategic planning, but not necessarily what good governance and things like that would mean. So I didn't know if this was again, something that we would want to change the title or whatever it is, but I actually do echo her sentiment looking at this one as well.
With that said, I'm curious, any other council members thoughts or a recommendation for how you'd want to just tweak the language here or change this to better align with what we're picking up on, please?
Thank you. No, I did want to hear if there were any other council members that felt strongly one way or the other about the title for goal one related to governance.
So, um, I, while I think foster good governance sounds real good, I would like for us to look at what it is that we want to accomplish. So I think the, the things that we've outlined are things that I can agree with. And I'm good with changing the title or changing the goal. I'm okay with that. Right now I don't have a recommendation.
Okay.
But I'm good with changing it. So I just want to give that support, that way, you know, it can free the spirits in the room.
Right.
You know, to, to start their creativity. Although I got it on my shirt today, I ain't got it. I just brought it in theory.
One option could be successfully execute our strategic plan or successfully embody a strategically planned organization, something along these lines. Oh, please.
I'm not married to any particular language, and I don't know if there's a framework you're trying to meet, but to me, when I look at these things, what they really are about are operating strategically or operating with a strategic mindset or leading with strategy or, or something like that.
I like it.
Some other words floating out there in this type of world is like data-driven organization. So that's something else to consider, but that one works as well also.
Well, thank you. Can we leave it with you all to maybe get back to us with two to three options?
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Is that good?
And it, it's, this operating strategically is floating to the top, but we can also make a few other options there as well, so.
I, I just wanted to add in something about, you know, a culture of accountability, a culture of ethical and moral, you know, something to, something to guide us in that way because I think the spirit of where this came from in the first place was just to make sure that we are creating the rules that we're creating, abiding by the rules that we created and the ones that imposed upon us, all of those sorts of things. I, I just want to, I just want to bring something in around having a culture of, that adheres to that. Thank you.
Madam Chair. A quick question, and not to take too long on this particular item, but in hearing what Ms. Newton brought up, is the concern more along the lines of that the objectives don't match the goal or that the objectives should remain and the goals should be changed? Or rather, the goal should remain the same and then we put appropriate objectives in there that align with what governance is? So just making sure that as I'm hearing the conversation, I'm, I'm clear.
I'll let Ms. Newton speak first on her intention before I say my intention.
Thanks for the softball, Mr. Brown. I think that I mean it in all the ways. So I think that if this is going to remain a goal with these objectives, 1.1 through potentially 1.6, that the title should match what it is that we're actually accomplishing. So that is true. That said, I do still believe in good governance. I still want us to be committed to that and to find a way that we keep that enshrined as a value, whether or not it needs to fit in our strategic plan.
Yeah.
And I, I would say that from my perspective, I agree with all of the objectives and understand now that the title or the goal does not match the objectives. And so I would want to have a new goal, keeping objectives. And I'm hoping that the governance piece itself can maybe fit under operational excellence, but I have not gotten there to like evaluate that.
Right.
Um, but that's kind of what I was thinking in my head.
Okay. Well, I, I recommend we revisit good governance when we get to operational excellence, one of the later goals. Right now we have, we'll realign this title to match what's here. And then to answer your point, Councilmember Teresio, so 1.3 is also talking about the metrics for accountability. And I almost would recommend establishing a metrics for and culture of accountability in implementing the strategic plan, because that may get to what you were discussing. Would that be a reasonable change? Please.
And I just wanted to echo what Ms. Teresio, you know, expressed as well as relates to ethics. Just, just trying to find some way to place that in there because number one, we know that this is a, this is a message to the public, an expression of what our priorities are. Uh, and frankly, I like the idea of it being kind of enshrined within the plan in that hopefully it's creating and signaling a legacy for future members of county council that these were our priorities. And we would love to see them continue to build on that tradition. Thank you.
Okay. Culture, ethics.
Accountability.
Accountability.
The other thing I want to bring up to the group, just as some insight, so as we're talking about updating your goal number, as we look at most of these fall under the vision, actionable goals, kind of your strategic plan, we then have 1.5, collaborate with other governance. So just want you to kind of think about that one. It's a little bit out of place now, once we change that one, but we have one in your, coming up in one of your goals that talks more about public engagement, community engagement. So just kind of think about if that might be something we want to consider changing that to another spot.
Certainly. At the same time, while we're looking at whatever we call this, I think that there are a lot of reasons why we want to collaborate with our partners and other governments. And one is because it just makes sense. But I also do think that there is a strategic element in terms of how we partner. I think that there are ways that we can leverage the resources that we share to achieve greater things together. So potentially there is a fit. I, again, I won't die on the hill for that, but I think that there's a case to be made that it could still potentially fit.
Okay.
Although, sorry, I'll just say if, if it stayed here, the goal in that sense would be more effectiveness, whereas a really big part of it is about relationships and collaboration. So I can easily see why that element of it could, would go someplace else.
Yeah. Dusha, a quick update, the fifth bullet, can you just make that under 1.3? Just copy and paste that all to 1.3. Sorry, maybe a lag. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, where it says a culture of accountability, ethical and moral guidance. I think that's a good place to, a good thing to place underneath 1.3. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion or suggestion changes for this one? Just to recap, what we'll recommend here is editing the title to better reflect what's here, 1.5. editing the title to better reflect what's here, 1.5. We like those. We also like good governance. So I think we'll try and find a place in the other goals and we, we have a few recommendations there for where that can go. And then we'll tweak 1.3 to include a metrics, culture, ethics, language, because this is talking about accountability and implementation of the plan. Yep. Great. And then collaborate with other governments, 1.5. It sounds like what we want to do here and correct me if I'm wrong, but make sure that we're saying collaborating strategically with other governments. I mean, it is somewhat implied, but at the same time, this is your, this is the language that you all would like to see reflected there, so. I think we're, are we good for this goal then? Or any other thoughts or changes that you all recommend? What are your feelings?
I have a question.
Please.
Just looking at 1.2 about the shared vision.
Okay.
There have been different conversations that we've had and so this is just the idea. I don't know where it goes. But if we're talking about operating strategically, there's operating strategically. And then there's also an idea about having a vision and having a clear vision. And to Councilman Livingston's point earlier, I'm going to put words adjacent to him. I'm not going to put them in his mouth. But, you know, he talked about, you know, having visionary priorities and whether you call it innovation, but just really thinking ahead. I think that that seems to be in conversations I've had with council members, an idea that we are deeply committed to. I don't know that that is represented here.
Right.
I don't know that it fits in this context, but I would like to see us find where we capture that idea that is, is not just, yes, we're adhering to our strategic plan. Or maybe it's our strategic plan in the future, our next iteration needs to be more visionary. But how do we capture that idea of being, you know, that, that real leader that we want Richland County to be and achieving some of those, those things, you know, yet, yet unseen for us.
Would something along the lines of a shared long-range vision be closer? I don't know. That to me is, gets part of the way there.
Sure.
Okay.
And again, I don't, I'm not married to, to where it fits. I just think it's an idea that should be encompassed somewhere.
Okay. Shaefer, 1.2, can you add a shared long-range vision? And then we'll just recap this back at the end if there's a better place that we can incorporate that in. Is that all right? Okay. Councilmembers, are we comfortable with some of what we talked about for Goal One? And this is what we'll do for each of the six primary goals for the rest of the afternoon. So if you like the language there, then we can continue to move through, but any changes are welcome. Okay. Oh. Sorry, I can't hear you. Sorry. Just before we move on here, conversations revolved around what is currently here, which was developed in '22, some of the language changes we can make to update it. Regarding anything new that you'd like to add in to embody this operating strategically that the title will move to, is there anything new that you'd like to see placed underneath this? This goal generally? And keep in mind that fostering good governance will likely be more akin to an operating strategically. Okay. Seeing none, I think we will move to Goal Number Two. All right. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to do the same thing with Goal Number Two. One that we saw was one of our highest things for your headliners over there earlier this morning. So we're moving into invest in economic development. And we've got the full page on page 61 of your packets if you want to spend a few minutes taking a look through that as well. But our high-level objectives for two, for Goal Two are create high-paying jobs from planning growth and strategic economic development projects, evaluating the community-specific capacity for additional shopping and amenity recruitment. And 2.3 is promoting and supporting a regional and state economic development team. So we'll give you about 10 minutes. Take a look through page 61 and we'll do the same process. If there's any feedback on any of the goals, the titles, or if there's anything new that you'd like to add to this goal as well. All right. We'll start wrapping up our conversations and beginning the discussion. All right. So let's first start with the goal itself. Are there any recommended updates to the goal title of invest in economic development? The, the goal itself, the goal name, invest in economic development. Are there any recommendations to change it? Keep as is? Does it embody what we want to accomplish?
I'd like to see some changes made to this particular goal. The model right now seems to be focused on growing the economy by attracting industry and manufacturers. There's, there's more than one way to grow an economy. I'd like to see us focus on small businesses and entrepreneurship, promoting those things. I, I just don't think that this addresses that. I don't know if it should be here or if it should be in growth, but that's another way to grow the economy or economic development is promoting entrepreneurship, promoting, creating programs for small businesses and making the area more friendly for small businesses.
Okay. So what I heard from you is you're okay with the title of growing, of invest in economic development, but there might be an opportunity for us to add potentially more goals and objectives that pertain to different sectors?
Yes.
Okay.
I gave big snaps to that because I think we've had huge successes. We've had huge successes with big manufacturing-type things and we need to, to diversify a little bit. So I'd love to see us think in other ways around economic development and good jobs for people and ways to attract 2.2, the amenities that go with all of these kinds of things.
Absolutely.
Including restaurants.
Exactly.
Okay. So what I heard from, from you was, again, we're okay with the title, agree with adding another objective that encompasses like entrepreneurship, small businesses, and then adding more types of amenities to 2.2. Did I capture that correctly? All right. Any other comments, thoughts around any of these objectives here, the goal itself?
I don't want to put Ms. Green on the spot, but I love what you're saying, Tish. And I just kind of want Pam, if she could, to just kind of speak to that because they've been doing so much work in that regard. As far as getting investments, the training and the things that have been going on, her team has been doing an outstanding job, so.
Thank you for not putting me on the spot. Thank you, Councilwoman. We were just discussing this at our table and you pretty much said verbatim what we just stated. Part of that is as we think about economic development too, is, as we look at the whole P3 piece of this, that we find ways to capture the businesses that are being used in Richland County, not necessarily to set a goal or anything of that nature, but it's also part of sharing the story of how businesses that are in Richland County or small businesses are playing a part in our whole public-private relationship. So we do have, we have some ideas out of the Office of Small Business Opportunity, but our goal is to make sure that we are providing proper training and we're looking to move into more strategic, technical trainings to help fill the gaps that allow us to be able to help in our piece of small businesses and the economic development piece. And I'm just ditto in everything that you said and Councilwoman English. We're just trying to make sure that we are spreading the love to all that are in Richland County.
Thank you. Take comment over here.
Thank you. So first, in following up on what Councilwoman Aileen said, yes to everything about small business and entrepreneurship, I would just add that South Carolina as a state has a model that is very manufacturing-focused and one of the things that has been slow to achieve on many levels is also looking at other types of innovation and knowledge workers, et cetera. So while we are, yes, going to continue to attract manufacturers and yes, going to see what we can do for small businesses, I think that there are also other types of industries, for lack of a better word, that we might want to explore. And so I don't, I don't know how much we look at what the entire menu, so to speak, of economic development opportunities are to then say, okay, we want to focus on these specifically or there's a gap here, or you know, we have infrastructure and support for this type of economic development and maybe we need to pursue it more. I just know, for example, the knowledge economy has just been a place where our incentive structure statewide hasn't really supported that. Two other things. One thing that I would like to figure out how we have is just again, how are we really promoting economic development all around the county and, and trying to attract prosperity there? And then finally, what I would like to see added, if it fits here, is we have had conversations about what, you know, travel tourism and recreational tourism and the types of economic development that that provides. And so to have that be something that the county really actively works to explore would be something that I think would be a great priority and is economic development to me.
Thank you. So just to recap what I heard, looking at other opportunities in economic development such as innovation workers, knowledge-based workers, but looking at it as a whole and potentially prioritizing which ones are focused that we would like to look at. potentially prioritizing which ones are focused that we would like to look at, then equal opportunity for all of Richland County for economic development opportunities, and then also exploring more the tourism piece, correct? Right, what do you, did I miss anything that you have or note it down over there? Right, I see a question over here or a comment over here?
We might want to consider going to 2.4, somewhere around the line of encourage and promote the development of small businesses and entrepreneurships.
That has been noted, thank you. Was there a question over here?
Really quickly, we have not yet distinguished between primary industry attraction and internal revitalization issues, and that's one of the things that we need to be discussing at the county. What is primary industry attraction? And by industry, I don't mean industrial. I mean businesses that bring in money from the outside versus businesses that recirculate money internally, and we need to have that discussion at some point.
I agree. Any feedback on that?
Oh, sorry, no, I didn't have feedback on it. I was, I had another topic.
All right.
Did anybody else have feedback on his comment though before I move on? I was looking at goal 2.2 and wanting to somehow change that. It's very, very specific, which is fine, but I think some of the initiatives that are matched with it don't align with the goal. And so I didn't know if there's a way to change the wording of 2.2 to make it a little broader. I think there is, and I'm not trying to go initiative, sorry, but I'm just making a connection with planning. So we talk about really working with community development and then also looking at potential zoning in areas, which really is a planning piece around how we encourage more commercial growth, which I think is good, but then there's outside of the planning piece, then there's separate stuff of recruitment for these industries is a different conversation. And so I don't know if the actual wording of that goal aligns.
We can definitely provide some feedback for you if that's something we can explore and then get back with you.
Yes.
Okay. So that's on the initiatives, the point, bullet point number, bullet point five on initiative 2.2. Two words that I'll keep saying are culinary school.
So I just want to say to that piece, I think the conversation continues to be that we want to encourage and grow restaurants within Richland County. There has been an argument made that in order to do that, we should create this culinary school to help train, therefore create a basis to have folks that can work at restaurants. I want to evaluate if that really is a true thing, right? Like maybe there's something else we can do that attracts restaurants, maybe there's some incentive package, I don't know, right? Like is it really a culinary school per se? So I think there's something that needs to say evaluating how to increase.
And so I think that ties into what the gentleman just mentioned, really exploring what your primary industry attraction is, because I think that would be all part of, is this something we even want to explore? So I think we'd want to do some sort of analysis or have your organization do that type of analysis on those individual industries.
I'm sorry, I missed that. So is, are we saying we're going to evaluate whether or not having a culinary school leads to an increase in restaurants or?
I'm saying that we need to have an analysis overall, so not just restaurants, but I think in general, our industries and where we are and what we're missing, an analysis overall of how to get there, because it might not be the culinary school that gets us more restaurants. So it's analysis to determine what is best.
If I could, so, and maybe this is just a question for a sidebar later, but first, when Ms. Mackey asked if we could take a look at the wording of 2.2, I just wanted to say that I really support that. And I guess I'll just say here, I wasn't going to say anything because everyone seemed on board, but I'm a little, I'm a little confused about this objective as part of our economic development, and I too want great restaurants and I too would like great shopping, but I guess I'm still just trying to figure out how we're tying this to our economic development goal, like what the county does in this, creating restaurants and how this fits in for the county. And maybe it's we're saying if we had this much more vibrant restaurant scene, this would be a better place for people to want to live and we would attract more talent. But I'll just say, I struggle with this 2.2 altogether, the way that it's worded, how it connects to the broader economic impact of the county, and again, specifically, what is the county's role in doing this specific thing and how it ties back to our other strategic goals? And I'm one of 11 and I'm happy to have my fellow council members explain this to me later, but just to go on record, again, I think it's a great thing, as are many great things, but for the county? I don't know.
Let me try my suggestion again, because I certainly agree with the removal of 2.2.
Do you agree with using your microphone?
Well, I'm sorry, to be clear.
I meant that lovingly, apparently.
Mr. Livingston, just to be clear.
Is it on now? Can you hear?
Mr. Livingston? Yes, just to be clear, I did not say to remove 2.2. I just want to be clear. I was just saying to reword the goal of 2.2, but then there was an additional thought by Ms. Newton, so I just want to be clear about any comments you might have. Thank you.
Well, I would suggest we consider, we're looking at 2.2, probably changing that to something more general, as I tried to mention earlier when I was thinking about a 2.4, and that is to encourage and promote the development of small businesses and entrepreneurship. That'll take care of additional shopping, that'd take care of all of those things that we're going to talk about, if we just state it that way. Because.
Another suggestion might be to, again, try to make it a little more broad to reference promoting or facilitating a culture that, you know, a workforce or employers would want to locate. I think like restaurants and shopping could be, fall under that broader umbrella.
Any other feedback on goal two?
Okay. I think we did our last economic development strategic plan in 2021 and we're due for an update. So in the last strategic plan, it included interviews with each specific council person and then they built the plan off that. So expect to, expect to, another effort here in the next six months so we can start a new plan.
Thank you. All right, so I think we have.
Recap.
Yep.
So just to recap, looks like we'll readjust 2.2's language, one second. We'll adjust 2.2 to be more broad, rather than just capturing the industries listed there, will be more just all encompassing as to what industries would work best for the county. And the county's role in this. We can see if we can make, fit that in there or if that's a place we want to put it somewhere else that works as well. And then 2.4 would be new, which is language recommended by Councilmember Livingston, which is encourage and promote development of small business and entrepreneurship as a standalone new goal. So now you have four focused on high-paying jobs, specific kind of evaluation of key industries to invest in, promoting a regional economic development team, and then small business and entrepreneurship focus, and that encompasses for Councilwoman.
Oh, just again, hold on one second. Question for the chair. Madam Chair, is the idea that the work that we do today would then come back to us via the Strategic Planning Committee? That was.
It would be, because then we would still have to vote on it at a recommendation out of committee.
Okay, so then the thing that I suggested adding or for consideration was travel tourism. And so if that's something that council's going to vote on, then we can just leave it there, if we need to have a discussion about that now or if it fits someplace else?
I was going to say, can we pin that? Because I already believe that's under another goal. So are you saying you just want to move it?
If it's, I'm saying that I think it should be a priority and it seems like economic development, if it's someplace else that's more appropriate, that's fine with me. So if we want to, I just didn't want it to be lost because it wasn't in the recap.
Okay.
Can I have that one in my notes as a potential 2.5 for the tourism piece, if that's where it needs to be placed?
Focus specifically on tourism.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So you can add another row, should I? Put 2.5, Invest in Travel Tourism, Travel and Tourism. Okay. We can move on to the next goal, council members, if you're comfortable with those changes we discussed. Okay. About 30 seconds, we'll jump into goal number three, suggested changes for Commit to Fiscal Responsibility. Everyone, we'll take a 10, 15-minute break. We'll do another two goals and then we'll get a break in. We're at a good pace, so stretch your legs, head outside. Okay, yeah, we all get them back. 15-minute break. 15 minute break. Two minutes, we'll get started here again on goal number three and four. Saying one, two, three, three counts. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, getting started here again for goal number three. This goal was focused on commitment to fiscal responsibility. This is a, pretty much a key goal based off of our discussions and what we found you all are interested in. And just the general consensus, this is definitely a primary kind of key goal. There's three elements to it. Alignment of budget to priorities and seeking alternative revenue sources. Establishing processes to prioritize initiatives and to align with available resources. And balancing budget with projects that do not affect minimum thresholds. So those are the currently, current three objectives for the plan to achieve the goal of commitment to fiscal responsibility. So council members, please take a few minutes here, familiarize yourself with those goals. Or the goal and the objectives. There's additional resource near the rear of the packet as to the existing tasks for these. But anything you recommend for these. And in about two minutes, we will take any suggested changes to the language here. Council members, for goal number three, commitment to fiscal responsibility. What changes or conversation or discussion would you like to bring to your fellow council members on this goal? Please.
I've been told to express that I'm speaking only for myself and not this table.
And maybe Don Weaver.
Get a sense for where it might be going. But I really liked the initiative set out in 3.3. But I really liked the initiative set out in 3.3. As somebody who didn't participate in the 2022 process, and came to understand again from my colleagues here as I was reviewing the initiatives, that they had been completed. I still really like the spirit of the goal objective itself there, 3.3. Is it okay that I'm talking about 3.3 right now? All right, all right, all right. So I was just requesting that, in light of the fact if we were going to retain the objective, we would need to set forth new initiatives. I wanted to encourage that we continue to express to the public a prioritization of minimizing taxpayer burdens. And that's obviously both individuals, but also businesses who operate and pay taxes on their own property here in Richland County. So some way to say that, some way to continue to again signal that prioritization. And I know 1.1 talks about aligning budget to priorities, which I greatly appreciate. I just wanted to encourage a step further to say like, we might even be willing to sacrifice something and/or other priorities in order to prioritize reduction or, you know, of the taxpayer burden.
Okay.
Thanks.
Just so that I have this, you're saying a potential new objective along the lines of prioritization of minimizing the tax burden?
Yeah, there could be a new 3.3. I feel like it might be a new continuation of the spirit of 3.3.
Oh, of 3.3, okay, thank you.
That is me and not this whole table speaking.
Okay. Other thoughts, yes, sir?
I want to go back to objective 3.1.
Okay.
It said aligning budgets and priorities and seeking alternative revenue sources. I think we've been doing a great job at this, especially aligning our priorities. As far as seeking alternative revenue sources, we've traveled to DC, to Capitol Hill. We also have lobbyists over at the State House. And so, but we haven't had an opportunity to get any of those funds because earmarks disappeared. And so hopefully coming back into the new session, we might be able to continue to go down this road. So I would like for us to keep this objective as we can continue to seek alternative revenue sources.
Okay.
Over here. So on 1.1, just a question that we were talking about over here. Sorry, not 1.1, 3.1. And the question is this, Love it, is 3.1 really two things? Is it aligning with priorities, is that one thing? And is seeking alternative revenue sources a different thing? So that's a question. And then also as part of that, is it aligning the budget to council priorities, county priorities, street and plan priorities? Which priorities are we aligning to what we want to have a level of specificity there?
Any other thoughts?
So I like that, and I think it might be too. And so I'll just say that when I'm looking at 3.1 and looking at seeking alternative revenue sources, I'm also thinking about how do we leverage those revenue sources to maximize? So like, let's just say we have penny funds for something, but then we can also get a federal or state grant or something like that to really say, okay, this is the, this is the thing that we need to do. How can we make sure that we do it in the best way possible without having to kind of, I don't know, cut corners? I can't think of a better way to say that right now. But just to make sure that we're not downsizing unnecessarily or minimizing unnecessarily, something that the public really needs and wants. And then I'll just also say that alongside Mr. Brannum, with the 3.3 language, while we want to use every single taxpayer dollar that we have in the most efficient manner possible, I just want to acknowledge the reality that there is plenty that we can be doing. It's sort of like, I look at my house and somebody's like, what would you like to redo next? And I'm like, I could literally spend all of my money for the rest of time on this house. And so it's just about how do we make sure that we use every single dollar in the most appropriate way possible? Thank you.
Two more things. And part of this, because I'm sitting next to someone that knows something about finance more than that it's coming from me. So on 3.3, two thoughts. One, to address one of Mr. Brannum's concern, that this be something that we not lose. The part of what happens too, though, is this isn't actually an annual process. So even though it's complete now, it's something that would by nature recur. And so we don't have to lose it, even though it's complete for now, whatever it is that we do to extend it or continue it. But then on 3.3, balance budget with projects that do not affect minimum thresholds, we know what we mean there, but perhaps a more specific and accurate wording would be that we have our budget aligned with our fiscal policies, because we do have policies that address what the minimum thresholds are, as well as other financial best practices. Which is why our finance department keeps getting recognized.
So aligning the budget with financial policies instead of the specific affect on the minimum threshold, is that correct?
Fiscal policies.
Okay, did I?
You said financial.
Oh, fiscal, okay, thank you.
Fiscal. And I don't know the difference, but she does, and she said fiscal.
This is a good distinction, good distinction. Okay. We have a few thoughts for suggested changes. So a lot of it revolved around 3.3 with regard to, do we want to discuss minimization of tax burden, maximizing efficiency, and alignment with fiscal policies? So I think between that and a new one, we should be able to address all of that for you all. Other than that, did I miss anything, Kayla? For three, I think we had a comment for three one and three, maybe two. But, I don't know if I missed anything on that. Okay.
Well, just to say for three one, the question was, are those two things or are they one?
Oh, yes, you're right. Alignment of the budget or seeking revenues, or alignment of budget priorities or seeking alternative revenue sources?
Yeah, we've got, yeah, the and there, just the question is, should those be two different goals? Because the alternative revenue sources can actually be a lot broader.
Right. Okay. That would give us five, probably five objectives. And so I think what we can do is split those and then add the language for the new updated goals or objectives. And then we'll see if any can condense and are close enough to combine. Okay. If you are comfortable with that for goal number three, we can move to number four. Okay. Take a second and read through the objectives currently here for goal number four. Plan for growth. And we'll take about 90 seconds, we'll take two minutes here.
So this one's already there. So this one is on where he said, it's not a new one, he said he wants it to be a new initiative. Yeah, so this becomes this. So this one becomes fiscal policies, yeah.
And then where do you get maximum efficiency?
So this one, well, that one, if they want, could be a new one. This one's just an initiative under 3.3.
As I was saying, is that just between all three?
Okay, so this one, this one I didn't have. I just wanted to make sure. And then a new one would be, then there's five, or 3.5.
Yeah, so immediately, well.
So that stays.
I'll do that 3.1.
Yeah.
3.2.
Yeah.
3.3.
Well, I wouldn't, like, don't.
That's what I was saying, is that it'd be.
So I would just move this down, because you don't want to reorder, you see what I mean? If they have, I would make that, so then it stands out, it's like, there's the new ones. So I'd make that 3.4 or 3.5.
I'm fine with that. But now that's where all five, I'm fine.
Okay.
So this first piece would be in 3.3.
Okay. Sounds good, plan. Okay, do you want growth or do you want public engagement?
I'm already on growth, we'll do growth, take a break, and we'll do the last three. Unless there's one that you like more than the other. Okay, we'll do growth. Is there anything on those charts that's growth, or you, I think growth management as well? Growth management, okay.
Okay, goal number four is plan for growth. The objectives are establishing plans, establishing plans and success metrics that allow for smart growth, coordinating departments to prepare for anticipated growth in areas by providing water, sewer, and roads in necessary locations, create excellent facilities, provide equitable living and housing options. And we're interested, council members, in your thoughts? Right here.
Hi all, since we have marked 4.4 complete, I'd like to suggest a new 4.4 around creating policies to address ongoing housing supply and affordability, so that as we have, I know we have some funds to put towards housing affordability, but even as we move forward, to bake thinking about housing and affordability into our ongoing policies, whether it's zoning or comprehensive plan or whatever that is. So those are my thoughts about 4.4.
Then my thoughts were around 4.3.
Okay.
Create excellent facilities. I feel like it's vague. I'm not sure what that means. And I just would probably need to better understand that. Especially, I feel like when we are talking about our facilities, if we're talking about county-owned property, and is that already included somewhere else? So that's my overall thought for that one. I'm just not sure in general anymore if that's a, maybe it could be deleted.
Right.
Just going to throw that out there.
If it were county facilities, so it's addressing the impact of planned growth on the county operation, would that be valuable to keep in there? Okay. So create excellent county facility. And open any other thoughts for that one, too?
Maybe, I don't know if excellent is the word either.
Okay.
But in general, creating, creating county facilities that meet the current need and also future growth or needs. But that's a lot to, for wording, but that's, I guess, my desire where I'm trying to get at. I think that's saying more plainly what it is I would like to see. I don't know if excellent, that can mean a lot of different things to people, so.
Okay. Please.
A question on what you just said, Ms. Mackey. I was listening, in your definition, and I don't have my glasses, was the word maintaining in there as well? I know about creating, but I think that our facility management and our physical property management is an area where that's a huge priority for the county. So I would want it to include maintenance.
So create and maintain. Great, I'm here for that.
And then a question on 4.2.
Okay.
Yes, so sewer, water, roads would, are things that would traditionally fall under the category of infrastructure. And I wondered if we still wouldn't benefit from having the word "infrastructure" in there in case there are other types of supports that are needed for growth. So for hypothetically, I'm not saying we get into this business, but there may come a time when we're looking at our infrastructure, we want to make sure that we are implementing smart technologies when we're doing roads, so that we're looking at digital infrastructure. There are other things besides sewer, water, and roads that could become important as we grow. So bottom line, would having the word "infrastructure" in here somewhere be appropriate?
Okay, that's all full. Other thoughts, conversation on planning for growth and your objectives to achieve that goal? Okay. When we think about planning for growth, unless there's any other thoughts, comments, suggestions for editing the language here, the council would like to, sounds like no changes for 4.1, establish plans and success metrics for smart growth. We talked about coordinating departments to prepare for anticipated growth in areas needed. Is there any suggested language, Councilmember Newton, that you would like to change for 4.2 to capture what you were describing? Is there language you think should come out of this or be a little bit more broad or more specific? Which, what do you recommend?
I think I was going for broader, but I really wasn't trying to tweak the whole thing. But to prepare infrastructure, to prepare for anticipated growth in areas by planning for infrastructure, and then you can have everything else you have. I just wanted to see if the word "infrastructure" could be included, because that opens doors.
Right. Planning for infrastructure. Planning for infrastructure, when we can, we can make that change there.
Sure, and I think that Mr. Geo Price might also have some thoughts on that.
Okay.
No, I was just going to suggest changing on the four point two, instead of saying providing, change that to maybe guiding, because I don't believe the county really, we don't necessarily provide roads or water. I think we do a little bit of utilities, but most of the roads that are created are done through development itself. So maybe using the comprehensive plan will be guiding when those occur.
Okay.
Would it be also, what is it, guiding, or is it also planning for? Because sometimes, in the growth that we have, we might not be responsible for doing any of those things, but hopefully, we would be creating processes and guiding, well, to your point, guiding, you know, helping, helping plan for the development and growth that's coming.
No, I'll agree, it was just that we're providing is this, we're the ones doing it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, it sounds like we're landing along the lines of coordinating departments to plan for and guide in necessary infrastructure needs, or something along those lines. But I think we have enough to suggest verbiage there. Okay, other than that, we suggested changing, create excellent facilities, which is four point three, to maintain county facilities, and just be a little bit more specific there. Lastly, policies to address ongoing housing supply and affordability as a new initiative for four four, since four point four is currently completed. Council, are we okay with that addition for four point four? To change to create policies to address ongoing housing supply and affordability? Sound good? Okay, I got a thumbs up. Okay, thank you, council members. We are now on to goal number five, and we'll have one more to do after this. Take the next five to ten minutes. We will review this one, and then discuss changes to goal number five, which is achieve positive public engagement. Thank you. Did you want to do this one, Kayla? Okay. I'll, I'll take notes, and I can do six, or do you want to do six? Okay. You can come back, I'll.
I feel like, I'm just trying to get it to you, I'm trying. There'll be definitely getting through.
Well, let's just be able to slide after it for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready to go.
One more minute, and we'll start discussing goal number five, achieve positive public engagement.
Oh, that's why there's two copies in here, because I was like, why do I have two copies? It was like a repeat.
Does theirs have that, too?
I don't know, let me see, six. Five, four, three, yeah, I don't know.
All right, we'll go ahead and start our conversation on goal number five. We'll first start with our high-level goal title. Any recommendations on adjusting that in any kind of way, or keeping it as achieve positive public engagement?
So at our table, in combination with Councilwoman Newton, we, we definitely agree with the goal title, and I would say, holistically, I think we agree with everything that's under here. Goal-wise, there's a lot of discussion of, I think, the, the words used in the goals, and what it is, where we were before versus where we are right now. With communication, public engagement is still very much needed. I think it's the, how we go about it, there's a lot of discussion that we were still having at this table. But I, I would say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say that we all firmly believe in this one, and think wholeheartedly, everything under here needs to be here, even the things that appear to be completed. We think there's still much more work still to be done.
Any thoughts on additional feedback on any of the points there?
Totally agree with what the chair, how she framed our conversation. I think, from my perspective, and I, I wasn't part of the 2022 process, so there was a lot of conversation about, you know, where the mindset of the body was then versus now, so I, I acknowledge I wasn't here for that. Some of the phrasing in like five point one and five point three, to me, felt like they might be more appropriate for a, a private sector entity, and, and not as much a public enterprise or a public government body. So that was, that was my hope, that, that maybe just some of the phrasing could be more voter, or constituent, or resident-centric versus organizational-centric. And again, totally agree that the goal is a valid goal, and, and that each of the objectives are as well. Thank you.
I'd like to jump in and say this, that as far as goal five point three, when you say complete and celebrate penny projects, I think, if I think back in twenty-two, when we came up with this objective, we were thinking about how the community didn't really know what was a penny project, and how many penny projects we had completed. And so we felt the need to make sure we celebrate those projects by having ribbon cuttings and photo opportunities, completed projects, posting them, and making sure that the public understood that, hey, this is the penny project, this was a part of the referendum, and, hey, we completed this project, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you, any others? Oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to add, in terms of five point one, I don't necessarily like the term county wins, it sounds a bit self-congratulatory. I think I, I would like it to say about county initiatives, and maybe outcomes that have improved citizens' quality of life, or something along those lines.
I think that kind of lines up with where we were, you know, making, centering the, the person affected, rather than centering maybe ourselves so much. But I'll also say that even if we did every single goal and objective in this whole strategic plan, you know, to a certain extent, it kind of, like, there are people out there that would not know what, how that came to be, if we did not share that, because it's, you know, folks don't know, you know, who pays for the library, folks don't know what kind of benefits they have through their local government, and so I think continually telling folks what the benefits of their government is, are, and, and how those came to pass is, is just ongoing work, that we can't assume that people just know or will look into.
If, if I could, because I was part of the discussion at that table, which centered around part of what Councilwoman Aileen was just saying, and so as you're looking at wording it, I think that one simple thing would be to remove the organization. And so, we're championing, and I can see how wins, I'm fine with that language, but I can see how that can seem very businesslike, maybe it's championing successes, or whatever that, that language is. But at the end of the day, it is the work that we're doing for the citizens, and so I think if that, the organization was removed, and then, I'm, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I know that there were feelings about the word champion, that maybe that was coming across too strongly as well, so I don't know if it's, it's celebrating, I think, I don't know that, for me personally, publicizing is enough to, to Ms. Tracio's point about, there's so many people that don't understand what the county does, and beyond that, while we've made a lot of progress with trust and understanding, we, we can't, now isn't the time to slow down. It's, in, in marketing, there's a common truism that sometimes a company, like, stops their advertising campaign right when it was just being successful, and that's the time when you intensify, you don't dial back. And I know that this isn't advertising that we're talking about, but there's so many people that just don't understand, they can't tell you five things that the county does, so it, it is really important. So if we just take the organization out and put that.
So if you don't mind, we'll take a look at some of the phrasing and send back some, like, word choices to review.
And just a note, that I don't think affects your language. The way that this process was defined, there were specific metrics that were assigned with each one, and so, using that methodology, I see how five point one can say that it's complete, but it really can't be, and so I don't know how we address this, because if we, if we tell every wonderful story that we have up until today, and then we quit, like, we're not achieving the goal, so however it is that we acknowledge that.
Any other updates on any of the points, or is there anything new that's not listed up here, that we would want to make as part of the public engagement? Was there one over there? We had to find this one right. I think that's all there. Okay. All right, do y'all need a quick break before we go into the next one? A quick five minutes? Okay.
Okay, great. Five minutes and goal.
Yeah, I saw a few people that said they needed a quick break.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. And just my sister's a nurse because she totally was like, something's wrong. And the day I got sick, and this is why she told me to go to the hospital, it was Thanksgiving. And I got up and like I couldn't move, like I literally couldn't move. And I was like, Mom, I was like, I'm supposed to have guests at the house for Thanksgiving. So I need you to come over and do like everything because I like cannot get out of bed right now. And she brought, yeah, and she bought my dad's walker from before, right, you know, when he passed, she brought his walker over. She was just like, at least you can walk. And I was like, I literally walked from my bed to the couch and I was like, I gotta go back to sleep. And my sister was like, let me check your heart rate. And it was so freaking hot, like my heart rate was just like, it was nuts. Yes, ma'am. It was a little bear. It was a little bear.
And what do you do for the county, ma'am?
I'm the Assistant County Commissioner.
Okay, okay. Oh, wait, you've been on our calls, that's right. I'm so, like, everybody looks different sometimes when I see them.
Yeah, but like, yeah, so my sister comes over and I'm just like, I don't feel good. So and I, and I literally, I've been laying down too. So like, your heart rate shouldn't be that.
Right.
And so she checked it and it was like, like, what's your normal heart rate, like 80 to 100, somewhere around there?
Something like that.
It was like 150, so it was already up. And then she's like, yeah, that's a little high. So then I'm like, okay. And she's like, just keep laying down. But she's like, I'm gonna check in like an hour and see where it is because she's like, I also want you to be okay.
Right.
And so she checked in an hour and then it was like 200. So she was like, what the heck? So she was like, that's it. And she told me literally, just go pack a suitcase, you're probably not coming home tonight. And then I knew something was wrong because I went there and of course, because my dad had heart issues, you know, before he passed. And so anytime you go in there and tell them your heart's bothering you, they like take you straight to like the observation room.
Yeah.
So, but of course it was already high. So they took me straight to the observation room. And then like five minutes later, they took me to a room. So I was like, something's not right.
Yeah.
They don't usually do that, you have to check and then you go back to the waiting room. I was like, crap. And then 10 minutes later, I'm in the eyes. I was like, what is happening with my life right now? And the guy just came right back, he's like, you're diabetic. And I was like, what do you mean? I just was like fixing him. I was just fixing him in my house last night. And he's like, we have to get you on insulin ASAP. He's like, you're so high, we will not release you till it gets down. And I'm like, what?
That is such, I mean, honestly.
It was so scary.
It's like, it's crazy how stuff like this goes under the radar.
It was so weird. It was the weirdest thing, but I'm like, I'm so stupid. And I'm going home freaked out, I was like, what if I give myself too much medicine? And so like by that, by that day, my husband and I were like, they're like, you have to learn everything. Because he's like, if she's sick, then you have to know how to do it. And we're just like, our lives just shifted in like four days. And then we had to like shift food because I'm like, we're not gonna buy two sets of groceries. So like, they have to like kind of adjust to some of my stuff too. So I was like, because we just, yeah, and it is. But you know, it's like, and I still eat most stuff, but it's just like, I only eat like half a scoop of ice cream, which is still fine.
Everything in moderation.
Everything in moderation.
All right, we can go ahead and get started here. This is our, the last goal of the six in your current plan. Take a moment, read through those within six. Establish operational excellence. There are eight objectives currently in operational excellence, and this was much of the conversation we had revolving around goal one. In addition to what we discussed in the morning session, there's, we anticipate a few changes or consolidations or edits here. So take a moment and we will get discussing here in a second.
Yeah. So it could be operation excellence and governance. Yeah, or you could suggest something like, under here, an objective would be, um, creating governance guidelines or something like that. So there must not be some government, the word... So like, definitely, policies, accountability on there. Yeah, and it's okay to keep learning, because I think they do need, because I think you wanna see it on the external side and the internal side. So it's phrases. I don't think we need to create like, a separate goal or initiative objective for them. But I think having, have a repeat on both sides is important.
Now, it's gonna change the strategic plan and collaborate down. It's okay, yeah, I like it. Realistic and achievable goal, well, for the strategy.
Mm-hmm.
For the, um, operations. Well, this is changing to operating strategically, yeah, so.
Yeah, we, or, I think we should come up with a couple of different titles for them, and they can choose the one that works the best.
Yeah.
And because what I did last time was, I took, I took all these, and they gave me three suggestions in AI for what you would call this section.
I like it.
And then we can make some recommendations for which one they want to take.
Let me ask councilman.
Okay.
Okay, we can go ahead and start our discussion with council members about goal number six, establish operational excellence. There are eight objectives for this. Establish competitive employee compensation, encourage investment in employee and county development, modernize employee technology, address employee-related matters to create a more desirable workplace, develop metrics of accountability for the strategic plan to achieve and maintain excellence, create reporting dashboards, address current and future resource needs, and define and develop a plan to ensure equitable services. And I'm curious, council members, what your discussion fell along. I know this relates closely to the first one, and we have some thoughts as well on how to, uh, better define or, um, keep these distinct. Goal number one and goal number six. So what, what are your thoughts? Council member.
Um, we discussed, uh, six point seven.
Okay.
Um, we thought that that could be, uh, deleted, and really, that we thought those initiatives under six, seven really could move under, uh, goal four, when we talked about create and maintain, uh, facilities.
Okay.
Because all of those were, uh, county facility discussions.
Got it. Goal number four or objective six point four? Just so I'm following. Goal number four, got it.
Which, well, goal was to plan for growth.
Okay.
And it was, let me get that.
I think it was four point two or four point three?
Four point three.
Okay. Other thoughts, suggestions?
Chair Mackey?
Yes, sir.
Hey, on that, on that particular item,
Mm-hmm.
um, I'd have to go back and look, but I think at the time, that conversation was really more about what the employment staff would need in terms of current and future resources to address their ability to do the work that they were doing. Not so much like amenities, or like facilities. So I, I like what you're saying, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
But I think they was talking more about that,
Okay.
um, during their timeframe.
Got it. So, is there a way, I guess, then, to address resource needs in the growth piece? In, in four?
No, I said, I, I don't have an issue, or I think that's a concern, I was just...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, to piggyback off, off of Mr. Brown's, uh, statement, I'm wondering, uh, under six, three, modernize employee technology, could, uh, could his sentiment around ensuring that our, um, that our employees have the resources that they need, could that be under six point three?
Six point three.
So we're modernizing employee technology and ensuring that employees have the, um, up-to-date resources they need to do their jobs?
Sure, council member, Tratio?
Yes.
If, to, uh, if you don't, if you don't mind me saying, I think six point four actually is, does what you're saying as well. We could, we could tie that in there, we don't have to have a separate take. I was just trying to really pointing out at the time, I think in the context of what we were discussing, that six point seven was more about staff needs than it was about facilities or those types of things. But, thank you very much, I think it could be captured in six point four, if you would potentially agree with that.
Okay, thank you, yes.
So, when I look at the operational excellence, a few things. One is, I wonder if the objectives that are under here are really operational excellence, or if we maybe had some broader things, and this became something of a catch-all. So if you look at the first goals, well, first, for me, operational excellence, we are an organization that serves people, and most of these items are internally facing, as opposed to external operational in terms of the excellent delivery of service. And so, I would wanna make sure that the excellent delivery of service somewhere is captured in our plan. But if you look at six, one through six, four, those are all internal, looking at our employees. And so you can make the argument, and I would accept it, that you can't have good operations unless you have great people. So that's fine, but it's really, all those items are about how we take care of our employees, which absolutely should be a strategic goal. It also, some of these goals were written, though, before we had policies and procedures in place that we have now. So, at the time that we wrote this, it had been a long time since we had really looked at employee compensation, for example, in a successful way. There is a plan that shall not be mentioned, that, just, I'll leave it there. But, where now we have, this is how we handle compensation, now we have, this is how we're reviewing compensation on a regular basis. So I wonder how much of this was a certain point in time?
Mm-hmm.
So, again, overall, this is very internally focused.
Right.
Would love to see how we are focusing it externally. And if we wanna keep the employee things in this operational excellence thing, fine. I don't know if there's maybe a broader umbrella for many of these things. I know we combine two, but there might be another way that some of these fit together, because ultimately, it's about making sure that we are compensating our employees well and providing for their needs, however it is that you, uh, break those things down.
And one thought along those lines is that, you can lean into this being an internal-focused, um, goal, because goal number one now is very strategic and external, um, externally-driven, because it's more about the strategy, the collaboration, the, um, leaning into the long-range planning, whereas this is more of the internal operational excellence. And you can, oh, sorry, you can make that distinction there? Is that, uh, helpful, or is that, um, along what you're discussing?
If, 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 if that's what the body wants to do,
Okay.
that's fine. My, my question then would just be, where are we representing in our strategic plan?
Service level.
The service level that we want to maintain, and maybe it's already there, but, and I know some of it's a, a point in time. When I first came on, on council, there were a lot of questions about the basic blocking and tackling, which we are doing a lot better. At the same time, there's a level of service that we wanna provide to our citizens. Yes, we have to have the strategic thinking, and yes, we have to be innovative, and yes, we have to do all the economic development. And, those basic things that we're supposed to provide, we wanna make sure that we're doing that in the most excellent way possible.
Right.
So I can comment on this one a little bit. So, in some past strategic plans, I've seen where, to your point, six point one through six point four would fall under more of a title of, um, like, enhancing workforce culture, something like that. And then, one of the objectives would be your, your, um, employee resources align with community needs would be one of the objectives that would fall under it. And then I know, initially, we talked about the governance, so I think that's still another goal that we were talking about. So, if some of these other things fell under that, I see this being, um, fostering good governance as a whole separate goal that wouldn't be combined with this, if we were to consider turning this more into a workforce culture type of goal.
That makes sense to me, I don't know how the body feels about it. Certainly, I know we're not trying to have fifty million goals, but in terms of the priority for our employees, I would certainly support having that be a separate goal. It just feels to me, just based on the title, that it feels like it's a catch-all here, when really, it's the thrust of what we're doing. And then I'll just say, this is my last thing, wherever, is this where that stay the course language was? Or was that the previous one? That was the previous one? I could have sworn that somewhere on here, it said something about staying the course, but maybe that was the previous one. Well, wherever that is, I hate that phrase, thank you.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments, additions, subtractions to the language we see here? Some of what we discussed so far is that there's the potential to make a separate goal focused on employee experience, culture, workforce, and still have this goal focused on operational excellence, and emphasize the excellence of service delivery in addition to, um, equitable services, accountable services with, uh, achievable metrics. And then resource needs, addressed future resource needs, we discussed combining with six point four. Did I have that correct? Six point four? Okay. Do you see, can you update that? Okay, we're good.
I guess, can I give more clarity? So, we're saying, um, I know we haven't got there yet, but we're saying, okay, goal number seven would be what? Because if this is focusing on operational accountability of service delivery, what is it that we're saying that we need a new goal to accomplish? Thank you.
Okay, so, I think what would happen or be recommended is that we take the first four, make that some sort of workforce culture. But we also could add in service delivery, if we're tying that into what the employees do to match your, your needs. Then we can take a separate new goal that would be either operational excellence and/or, um, good governance, so it then help take care of the other items we saw there, such as accountability, your governance, your policies, your procedures, would then be your, your seventh goal.
Any additional thoughts, uh, from the body? I'm, I'm thinking on that one. Councilman Branham?
Thanks, yeah, I was just looking at six point eight, I was wondering if we could potentially reword that, to focus on, like, reasonable access, uh, to county-provided services, like, the reasonable access by citizens of county services. As, right now, as it's worded, I feel like it's confusing. And this would just be more, uh, like, service recipient-focused in the, in its wording.
So that's six point eight?
Six point eight.
Any other thoughts on the suggestion of, um, kinda breaking apart some of these current objectives and creating a new goal?
Yeah, I just like the idea of keeping, keeping it manageable. I do feel like going through the other goals, it was nice to have maybe four or five.
Mm-hmm.
And so, for that reason alone, I like the idea of breaking it up.
Thank you.
Okay. Council member Branham, define and develop a plan to ensure equitable services for all citizens that promotes diversity and inclusion. Do you have any suggestions for any, uh, language that you can see there, to capture what you're describing?
Just, I think what I already said, which just seems like it's there in the notes.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
For, um, six point six, we have, like, we did, we completed this, we created the performance dashboards.
Right.
Is there just something that can, I don't know if this goal is necessarily a standalone, but is there just something that can state that we, as part of the strategic plan, we're just continuing to update the dashboard? But is this an actual standalone goal that's needed anymore?
I think this one actually goes to the very first one, which is already your strategy, data-driven organization, so that one could easily just be shifted.
Okay.
And that was six, six?
Question about that, just thinking about the dashboards. The goal of having the dashboards was really about transparency.
Right.
And, right, and so perhaps, when we move the dashboards, we can keep the language as dashboards, or it could be broader, about continuing to provide that transparency and accountability on our progress towards our goals.
Okay. Okay. Just to recap goal, unless there's any other additional changes you all recommend or would like to discuss for goal six, around establishing operational excellence, which we've discussed breaking into two separate goals. One focused on operational excellence and service delivery, the other focused on workforce culture and, uh, employee personnel. Other than that, there's a few other changes that, um, I believe we have captured here on the notes, combining six point seven to six, four, uh, making six, six more broad for transparency. Six point eight, we will put some words in here and recommend those to the committee, so you can see what, um, we suggest there to address comments. And then, um, six point three, I believe, oh, no, that was six, four. Other than that, that captures all of what we've discussed here for six, goal number six. Any other thoughts, comments, before we move on? Please.
Just wanted to take this moment to praise all the staff who were involved in creating those dashboards, implementing that software, implementing that process, coordinating across the entire county and their departments to make that happen. There is a huge lift behind that one little item.
Right. Okay. What we wanna do next is just do a little bit of recap, and we've gone through a good amount of content for the full day. And so, if you have any questions, comments, or thoughts as we go through a recap, feel free to, um, call us out or share your thoughts. I'm gonna ask, um, Kayla Dache, are you able to get the, uh, what's in the headlines? And we'll just read through those again. So if you recall, at the top of the day, we discussed what is in the headlines for, uh, twenty twenty-seven, when you all are recreating a new strategic plan. A lot of the edits that we landed on for the... A lot of the edits that we landed on for the strategic plan goals seem to follow some of the buckets that you all commented at the top of the day. And, oh, thank you. Economic development and tourism, we discussed. That was a bucket of a few comments. We also discussed becoming an employer of choice that is, uh, now finding its way into a new goal, focus on workforce, culture, service. And then, um, making sure that county is providing good customer service. There's investment into infrastructure, into technologies and programs, um, entrepreneurship and business development. Those were also mentioned at the top of the day. If you recall, when we were within the environmental scan, in the operating, um, objectives for each goal, more conversation there about economic development. And, uh, lastly, just innovation. How can we both internally in the county and when we're looking at other industries, be more innovative or lean into this innovation that's already occurring to, um, land in twenty twenty-seven in two years with the headlines that you all would like to see in the news about the county for all your work? So that is really all we wanted to talk through today. We have a few brief, um, just next steps or key points in the dates, timeline. Uh, we are at our workshop today. We'll hand over our suggested updates for your strategic plan to the committee. Committee will then review and approve, and we will hand to council in early December. And then in January, uh, we'll just do a quick kind of realignment for what that means for you all for the next few years, until you make a brand-new plan in the coming years. And so that is all that I have. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Mackey to close this out.
You guys look so excited. Wasn't this fun today? Great, I know. It's always good to take some time and reflect and look over our goals and essentially our roadmap. And so I appreciate all of you taking your time coming here today, walking through this. This is essentially our refresh. But I think it is a good reminder of where we've come from and where we're going. And we're all committed to that. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your time. Please continue to be engaged and come to the committee meeting where we share the updates. And this is a continual conversation. It doesn't end here. So if you go home tonight and you look at your packet and think of something else, feel free to share and give us those additional thoughts as Woody and his team works to update this final document. So Administrator Brown? Yes?
If you could, in your presentation, can you go back to the, the mission real quick? Uh, and I'll be very brief as I share these closing remarks. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of council for coming out this afternoon, uh, county administration. You may know that today is the kickoff of Customer Service Week. It's a national focus. And I think it's important as you think about what it talks about and one of the things that we're doing here. When the statement talks about providing exceptional public services through effective planning, proactive leadership, and inclusive governance to ensure that all residents, visitors, and businesses have equitable opportunities and improved quality of life today and in the future. And I think that's just apropos as it relates to the fact that Customer Service Week, you're here being proactive, you're here planning for the future of our residents, and how we can continue to deliver exceptional service, uh, to the public. So thank you very much. Appreciate you all. Have a great afternoon.